Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council's special meeting. Tonight where we are discussing the Aquatic Recreation Center options. On Tuesday, December 12th, in compliance with state law, City Council's special and regular meetings is being held in a hybrid format. With in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing. With that, we'll call this meeting to order, and Chris, if you'd like to call the roll.
Councilmember Soltis, councilmember Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Hartsock.
Here.
Councilmember Harjhausen.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Wagner.
I am present. Great, thank you, and with that, we will turn this over to Ethan. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight for the study session, we have an update on the New Aquatic Recreation Center feasibility study work that we've been doing this year. Paul was with us back in August and gave an update then. A bunch of work has happened since then, and so we'll give an update on that. And then, we'll be looking for input from the council as to a preferred option as we kind of wrap up. I'll kind of hand it off to you, Paul. I know we only have a limited amount of time, so I don't want to cut too much.
Sounds good. I see, yeah, I see people pushing buttons here. Okay.
No, you're live.
All right. Mark? Okay. All right, well, again, thanks for having me back here. This is my second time in front of you all. The, our first get-together was about midway through the study, and now we're going to be in the closing throes of the study and looking for some direction to sort of finish things out. We will get to that. I do want to say one thing while we have this lovely rendering on the screen, you're going to see more of this later, but I think it's a good time to sort of do some level setting about what a feasibility study is and what a rendering like this represents. I would think of this as not necessarily the design, but a potential design. Because the goal of the feasibility study is really to find out what program elements are appropriate for your community, what are the size, the correct sizes of those elements? What are the adjacencies of those elements? We have not gone through a full design process where we would include many others and the community more on sort of the design side of things. So the goal of the study is to come up with a potential design that would be representative of many designs because we know that it's the right size, we know that it's the property that it's on, and it could potentially be morphed into many different things when we get to the design process, but it's representative of potential other solutions at this point. Hope that makes sense. Okay, moving on, next slide, please. Okay, yes, as Ethan said, we have a little bit of a limited time here. We're going to try to keep the actual presentation portion under a half an hour, and then we'll have fifteen minutes for open discussion and answer any questions that there are. And then, thank you. And then we'll be looking for a direction at the end, in terms of two different possible directions, which one we should move forward with. And then, we'll explain a little bit with the schedule what that means in terms of moving forward with that one. So, again, I'm Paul Curtis, Principal at ARC Architects. We've been the prime on this study. We have a lot of folks behind us here. Those are all of our consultants. The only one I'll mention right now is Ballard King, who is our programming and planning consultant, and Darren Barr is with us from that organization. I don't know if we'll get to see him here, but hi Darren, and thanks for sticking around for the whole thing. Darren's part will come at the very end.
Thanks, everybody.
Hi Darren. Okay, so the one thing I do want to say about that team that is the folks behind us. We really wanted to build off of previous studies that had already occurred, so we, we tried to bring folks in who were from those teams and were already familiar with the project to a degree, so that is 2018 conditions assessment of the existing facility and the 2021 combined Maple Valley Covington Aquatics Feasibility Study. Okay, so this is really, this is the schedule, this is really just in here to say the top half of this surrounded by the orange box is everything that happened prior to us coming to you last time. That was really focused on comparing the existing facility and the potential that existed there against the Town Center site and the opportunities that existed there. At the end of that period, we came with to you, and that's when we were given direction to move forward with studying the Town Center site in more detail. So the first part of this presentation is a little bit of a review of things that occurred prior to that point. And then I'll make sure to highlight when we move into the study part two section, which will be all the new things that we have not, that you have not yet seen. Okay, so this is still review. Early in the process, we did a market analysis, Darren Barr was leading that effort. And that was really to sort of identify the the primary service areas, the secondary service areas. What sort of folks live within those areas, what the potential available income for recreation activities are from within those areas. And start to get an idea for refinements to the program, and again, that was the program that came out of that 2021 study. Following on the heels of that, the design team went out to the existing site, walked through the existing building, did an analysis of you know, where we could potentially add on to that facility and other improvements that would need to take place. We also went to the Town Center site and tried to get our arms around kind of the bound, meet some bounds of that site and the opportunities that existed there. We then reached out to the public with survey number one. That was to confirm and refine program elements that folks were interested in. And start to get a feel for which of the two sites would be most desirable to folks and the this is review, of course, but the Town Center site was of the most interest. We then developed preliminary options of the two sites. How could you develop on the existing facility and around the existing facility? How could you develop on the Town Center site? That was all tested in a survey that went out, that was survey number two. Those options were presented to the community, we got feedback from everyone on that. And we used the Covington Days Festival as a way to promote that survey. We shared the actual information from the survey there, but also drove people to the site to take the survey online. We then completed ROM estimates, rough order of magnitude estimates for the two preliminary options to get a sense of what those cost implications might be. And that is when we came to you all last, and that is when we got direction to move forward with the Town Center site. As a reminder, the primary kind of drivers of the differences between the two sites is that the existing site was not going to be accommodating of a gym, and that was a particular interest in surveys that we got back. And along with that, a walking track, again, that was sort of part and parcel with the gym, and that was a particular interest as well. Also, the recreational pool, if one were to be added at the existing facility, was going to be quite limited in how large it would be and not something that would be on a scale that would be typical with a new facility that you would see these days. Also, the existing facility was going to have to be closed during construction. Makes a lot of sense to sort of leave that in place until something that can accommodate those users is up and running. So we moved then forward, so we were comparing two options that had the same program. Different sites, the same program, and that was a program that was developed out of the 2021 process, and we had landed on sort of a happy medium from that document of where we felt each of the room sizes should be to accommodate the uses that we were hearing from the surveys. And in order to be able to study the Town Center site and provide options moving forward, there was the idea that the City Hall could also be co-located on that site. So that became a driver of how we could kind of distinguish between those two potential options moving forward that would occur on that one site. And so one accommodates the City Hall on the site with it, and one accommodates it directly adjacent, and I want to be clear kind of what when I say site, what that is, so there's a drawing that will show that, and we'll look at that in just a minute. But in terms of the program, in order to accommodate the City Hall, one of the options had to get smaller and become multi-story. That is so that its ultimate footprint was less, and that would allow the City Hall to be on the same site. So apologies for this being so small. If you can kind of see where we've highlighted things in green and things in red. That is taking the program that we brought to you last time and making things larger, that's the green number. And making things smaller, that's the red numbers. And using those to sort of make a distinction between these two programs so that we could offer you two options at this point where we're at today. Some of the big differences there is that the aquatics portion of the facility got an entirely additional pool. Which is a combination sort of learning pool and a therapy pool. So it's an additional warm water pool. Warmer than the competition pool, which is a little cooler for folks to be able to exercise in. And then the gym in the smaller option needed to become a single gym instead of a double gym. There are other more minor program differences, number of party rooms is one, number of meeting rooms is one, but nothing that compares in size to the aquatics, the natatorium getting quite a bit larger to accommodate the third body of water. I'm sorry. Okay, and so so those are the main program differences, and the reasons for that is to accommodate the City Hall. Okay. So these are the options that were then refined. Both of them on the Town Center site. This first one is the three-story option. You can see the Aquatic Center along the left side, the City Hall at the top right of the page. In both cases, we're trying to preserve a portion of the site as as a city square or plaza that also has connections across Wax Road to Founder's Park and to the Trailhead that would could be developed there. In this case, you'll see this is a much smaller footprint, and that is because this is a three-story option. Things are stacked one, one on top of the other. And the plaza hat, you know, mostly the plaza is going to look roughly the same between the options. One difference is that here, because you have that second story, there's kind of an, I don't know if I can point with this. Oh, no, it doesn't show up on that, I'm sorry. But in the green area at the bottom of the page, there's a healthy covered area, which is covered by the story above. And that is essentially the multipurpose room, we'll see that in the floor plan in just a second. Able to open up and spill out and have kind of covered outdoor relationship to that room. And part of the, part of what's going on here in lifting up the building is also allowing multiple places where you can pass through underneath the building so that there's connections beyond to the greater context of the neighborhood, so you're, we're trying to keep that plaza as open and connected outward as possible. Okay, so this is the floor plan. It's a little small, but the, the floor plan on the left is the ground floor, so that's the one that would be connected to the plaza. The community room at the bottom of the page is sort of where everybody would enter the building. And the plaza that's labeled just down to the right from that is that covered area where folks could potentially spill out and back in again. Everything to the hot, top half of this image is sort of back of house. It's pool mechanical, it's support for the pool, and it is the actual pool tanks themselves. So rather than excavating them down subgrade, they're actually sitting on the existing grade as is. So all the, the, this is sort of, this building is sort of divided into three sections, which are also the levels. The bottom level is the community functions. The middle level, if you go up the stairs, is all of the recreation functions, so the dryland recreation, the gym at the bottom of the page, and the aquatics recreation at the top of the page. And then you sort of have a second reception there with that circle in the middle where people who are coming from those uses, for those uses, will have sort of a second check-in. The first, the bottom one is just to sort of greet you and help you find your way. At the second level reception is where you would pay to use the pool or, or the gym. And then if you continue on up from that, you would arrive at the fitness and the weights and cardio areas as well as the kind of exercise classrooms are also on that level, and those look down to the gym. Also, from that top level, you would have seating that can look down into the pool area. There is less on-deck spectator seating in this option, and it's something that we would want to study more as we move forward and, and is a difference between the two options as well.
How much, yes, how much seating compared to what we currently have?
What is shown at the top there is probably comparable to what you currently have, it's just that it's a level removed. And what we would want to look to do is sort of interject more seating down on the deck area. In all cases, the child watch was removed from both programs, and that is, that was a function of, it's really not something that is that the folks running the center are wanting to take on right now. That's something where you can basically leave your child while you're going and doing an exercise. It's not a full-blown like daycare preschool kind of thing. Again, I'm sorry.
If, if I can also add, I think that's a dedicated space for that type of activity, and there's multi-room spaces or meeting room spaces that you could set up a program and for certain times of the week still have that type of functions. And if it's for, under a certain amount of time, it doesn't need to be an official daycare, right?
That's correct.
The only problem with that is some parents drop the kid off and come back twelve hours later.
Yeah. I can do that, what?
Do we, her and the current pool have enough seating for competitions?
It's crowded.
It's what, it's really crowded.
That's what I was thinking, so I mean, I would think that we would want to not just hit that, but definitely increase it. I know when my kids were in that, or Luke was in the seahorses, sorry. It was packed, like, you get up, you're not getting your shoes back.
We, we had, we had three of our kids in it this last summer. And that, you know, everybody's bringing camping chairs and getting there an hour early to get a spot.
It was stressful, yes.
And it's ninety degrees.
So just as a reminder, additionally, the gym, this gym is half of what you'll see in the other option, and because it's so small, there, there's not room for the walking track, so you can also not see the walking track here.
Beth, that's a question. Go ahead, Beth.
Thank you, thank you. So for, for the spectator seating, is it possible to overlay a little bit further forward over the rec pool? Or around the sides of it so that you can still see some of the rec pool and you have more visibility of the lap or competition pool?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, there's options, okay.
Yeah, and that goes to the point I was hoping to make at the beginning, which is this is really just kind of, this has not gone through a design process yet. There's lots of feedback we want to get that we can still incorporate. Really nothing set us in stone here. This is just something that can give us a sort of barometer as far as costs so that we can then move forward and make adjustments. Yes.
I'm just curious, is why we need two reception areas? I understand, one is, we're going to direct you, this is where you go, this is how you do it. Isn't there, I, I, I go to LA Fitness, we, if you're going to use the gym, you scan your app on the scanners, can we just remove the second reception area on the second one to create more space to do other things?
It is possible, it's something that would need more study if this were to be the option that we move forward with. What we were kind of doing is, is making a an, a head nod to the fact that this is a three-story option. It is going to require a little bit more management and, and you know, operational staff and whatnot, so we're showing a lower level reception, which probably has most of the kind of back-of-house admin occurring behind it. And then on the second level is a little bit more, you know, maybe aquatics-related staff and folks specifically dedicated to that. But if we were to move forward with this, I think we could have conversations with you know, folks who are working the facility right now and know this thing best and kind of figure out if that's really a necessity or not. It's a good question. Okay, oh, and I, sorry, before I go on, I always kind of miss the square footage and the, and the dollar value there, I don't know why, but it's a little smaller and I always skim over it. This is a fifty-seven thousand square foot facility, so this is the smaller of the two. And it's a seventy-one million dollar price tag for this. This is a project cost, the seventy-one million dollars is project cost. So that includes everything, taxes, design team fees, permitting fees, everything. It's not just the value that goes to the general contractor who's going to build it, which is hard costs, so whole enchilada. Okay. This is again, a can, very conceptual rendering of what this might look like. This is an image taken from the plaza. So you're looking kind of at the lower level there. That is the large public meeting space that has the windows. To the left is where you could spill out and have extensions of those meetings extending out into covered area. Above that is where you're seeing the gymnasium. And then on the very right-hand side is the natatorium that you're seeing beyond there. Again, very conceptual, this is just one possible approach. Lots of feedback is needed in order to make this reality, but we wanted to give you some visual reference of what this might look like versus what the other one might look like. And this is just it without the labels, so you can take it in in all its glory. Okay, and now this is the other option. I said that I would kind of define the site limits, and I got through that other option and haven't done that yet, so let me do it now. The whole black perimeter line that is dashed, that is the property line of the existing site. When we talk about the City Hall being on the existing site, or on the same side as the Aquatic Center, or on the adjacent side of the, as the Aquatic Center. It's actually still on that same piece of property. This just conceives of the road from the north being extended through to Wax Road. And so it's actually a new, a new road that would divide the two. They're actually on the same original piece of property. And the idea here, because the City Hall has moved directly adjacent to the Plaza site, let's call it. The idea is that that road extension would feel a lot like the Plaza itself, that it's a design strategy called a one-earf. It basically is kind of equal parts pedestrian and automobile, and you hopefully would feel like they're two pieces on the same plaza, even though they're technically across that small street. So this one, you can see it spreads out a lot more. That's because all the functions that were stacked into three stories are now on a single story. The exception to the comment about the single story is the walking track, which is on the second, quote-unquote, second level. But it's sort of its own suspended element rather than a legitimate full story. And then the administration areas, which we'll see, there was discussion at the the commission meeting that maybe that could be a two-story area as well, and that we can get additional staff needs met in that space, so potentially some minor areas of two stories, but predominantly this is all just one story. Which is why it has a larger footprint. Again, the plaza, kind of same idea there, really trying to have, connect the front door, and there's almost two front doors with this option. One if you're coming from the neighborhood from the north, and one if you're coming from kind of Wax Road and the park from the south through the Plaza. And both of them arrive in the same lobby.
Sorry, what was the purpose of that potential new road? Was it just to allow more access since the parking lot's really the only?
So that was a little bit of a carryover from a previous master plan that was done. You'd have to tell me the date, Ethan, but long before we came on board, my understanding.
I get it, it's something the cities had, had planned to do in that spot. One of the main reasons, if you can go back to the slide that shows it, is so that when we close off Wax Road, we can reroute traffic around the Town Center site easily for our events and whatnot. Because we've got the, the two-seventy-six connection and then the new road that would connect right there. Those are, that was the primary purpose for it, and it's, it's been planned in our plans for a while, but suppose it's something that could be reviewed if so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so this is the floor plan. You're only seeing one floor plan here because everything is kind of on this level. But the building is still sort of organized so that there's in the same way the other one was organized into clear groupings of levels. This one is organized into clear groupings of wings, I would say. And so if you were to arrive at that central lobby, if you were to move to the right, page right, you would be going into the, all of the aquatic functions. And if you were to move page left, you'd be going into all of the dryland functions. So taking the aquatic side first, the reception for the whole building, so in this case, there is just one reception because it's, everything's on one level. You would check in at that reception there, and then you could either move past that into the family changing hall where there are universal changing rooms or family changing rooms that are larger, have their own showers, and you could take, you know, whole groups of kids in there. And then the two large rooms just above that are the traditionally gendered men's and women's locker rooms, and so no matter which of those three paths you take, you arrive into the natatorium. Much more generous deck space in here. Quite a bit more, well, definitely a lot more on-deck seating opportunities, but in whole more seating opportunities as well. There are seating that is dedicated to the competition pool, which is sort of what you would, that would be replicating your use currently. But then there's also more kind of ad hoc or free-form seating associated with the recreational pool or the therapy pool where, you know, it's, it's a little bit more, you can be at a table or a different kind of seating, and if you're a parent waiting, you can kind of maybe do other things while you're also watching, so that's also taking place. I see a question.
Beth, go ahead, Beth.
Thank you. Yeah, just a quick question. Was there any discussion about also adding non-gender shower rooms or restrooms? I know there's varying versions of that in the private sector to accommodate various, you know, situations, so.
Yeah, absolutely, and that is what the, the rooms off of the area, sorry, my eyes, where it says lobby are, are meant to function as. We may need more of them or, or potentially you know, a more dedicated, larger space for that sort of use, but that is definitely something that we would work with the city closely on if we were to move forward with this option as a design option. Does that answer your question?
Did that answer your question, Beth?
Sorry, I was having difficulty finding them. Yes, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Great. Okay, and then if you were to move towards the dryland side of things, again, this one has the double gymnasium. The community room is the large space that you're seeing just off of the gymnasium, as well as some either party rooms or meeting rooms. Part of the idea is there that you could have functions in the gymnasium with sort of breakout spaces immediately adjacent to that for either larger meetings or more like smaller breakout group-type meetings, and so those become a little bit more symbiotic in this option. And then at the top of the page, above the gymnasium, I should say top of page to the gymnasium, not literally above the gymnasium. That's where you'll find the weights and cardio area. This is an expanded weights and cardio from the other option. As well as an additional exercise studio has been added here, so there's more exercise studio opportunities. The last thing I wanted to mention here is that the walking track is not only included and included around the gym. The last thing I wanted to mention here is that the walking track is not only included and included around the gym. But the idea that uh, it could also extend out into the lobby. Kind of bring some of that activity out into the space. And something that is popular right now is that the walking track is not just at one level, but it can sort of undulate up and down to provide. Different levels of difficulty or even come down into the lobby and to where you could enter directly onto it at quote unquote, at grade.
Go ahead, Joe.
All neat ideas, but things that need studying, sorry.
So I'm looking at the gymnasium. Um, I, two courts. I get it. We, we do have a lot of basketball and volleyball and stuff like that, but would we have? Kent Commons has a movable wall that they can have separating their two gyms that they have down there. Would that be something we would put in here as well? So we could break it up and.
Absolutely. So we've, we've done everything from kind of a weighted dropdown net that just allows two. Two games to happen at the same time, but there's no acoustic barrier. To something that's more maybe what you're describing, which is like a structured wall that can slide out and that, that can actually. Have an acoustic difference to where you could, you know, have a basketball game on one side and a, you know. Kinsenera on the other side of whatever. Um, okay. I haven't yet figured out how many pickleball courts you can fit in there. I'm sure the. Question might be coming.
Yes. And I noticed um, when I was studying this earlier today that, but then we also go from two party rooms to four party rooms. Going to the one story.
That is correct. So part of that is we wanted to, you know, purposely show kind of what the difference could be, but when you've got a little bit more space to spread out. Part of the, part of the. Discussion and particularly as we move forward. You know, what is the right number? Even though you select this option, doesn't necessarily mean we're stuck with four party rooms. We can still have. Two party rooms or six party rooms, but it's just kind of. Making a mark of here's what it would cost to do four or six.
Paul, I think it's also worth mentioning that when you start talking about party rooms. Yes, they can serve as a party, but they can also serve as just kind of a, a classroom space as well.
Space, yeah, yeah, they, they can be very multi-use and maybe in the end report, it'll be better to actually refer to them that way. Okay, any questions on this before I move on? Um, the, the therapy and instructional pool is uh. In between the two larger pools and that is a very. Uh, we just put one of those in out in Port Angeles at their Shore Aquatic Center. And it's their most heavily used pool and most diversely used pool. They do everything in there and it's warm, which is nice. I swam in.
I do have a question about the community room, knowing that it still needs to be designed out, but approximately how big? Would this room or could this room be?
Yeah, um, I, it's very flexible. I, I mean, we're not as kind of. Hemmed in as far as the site in this option, so it could certainly grow some. Um, I. Do not recall off the top of my head exactly how big that is, but. Yeah, that's a good way to measure it and it, it'll actually say right here the square footage if my eyes were better.
Three thousand square feet, yeah.
Yeah, thank you there. Yep, there it is in green. Ooh, you're.
How many square feet is this one? Yeah.
Maybe a thousand, I would guess, but I don't know for sure.
Yeah, it would be interesting. I feel like, yeah, I mean, wish list wise, we should have a community room that's bigger than. That one, just to accommodate. A hundred and fifty people-ish.
Oh, were you done Jennifer?
I am.
Go ahead, Beth.
Yeah, thanks. Um, was there any discussion about spectator seating for the gymnasium? If we were to host.
Yeah, um, typically. But we did, I don't know that we discussed that specifically. Um, typically what we do and what has room for here. Is sort of tip and roll aluminum bleachers and those are stored immediately adjacent to the gym and then they're brought out for. On a per event basis.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I need to go faster. Oh, there it is. Um, okay, so again. Very conceptual. Just an example of what this could look like. There's lots of room to make it look different. Um, but the idea about this one is really. Locating all of the functions that have kind of the activity and the excitement of the space. On the plaza to help activate that plaza. And hopefully having a lot of those um, spaces being able to spill out and, and have indoor-outdoor type functions occurring. And I guess, um, so the, on the left, the lower portion of the left, that's the community room in this option. Um, above and beyond that is the gymnasium. That's those high windows there bringing light down into the gym space. And then on the right, you're seeing all of the nadatorium, uh, the pool areas. There it is. Um, so once we had refined those two options, we then brought them back to the public. We went to uh, in the same way as Covington Days event, we went to the Makers Market. And uh, brought all the materials and showed folks there and then used that as an ability to drive. Uh, folks to be able to take the survey. And this one was a more pointed survey. Um, about kind of which option do you prefer? Um, so the first part of the discussion was kind of about the features that are in. The first part of the questions was about the features that were in the two options. Um, I want to explain this slide in a little bit in particular because I always get confused with those black lines. Those represent the midpoint of people's preferences. So there, everything that is lighter blue. Is the more positive responses. They prefer that option. And uh, then when you get to that middle colored blue, that sort of people had a neutral response. So the middle of that grouping of neutral responses, that midpoint of how people. Uh, responded. So the three story option um, had, you know. Fewer light colored blue answers, so they had. Uh, less favorable response to the three story option. And then conversely, on the second one. They, you know, had a much stronger positive response to the one story option with the midpoint falling around. Is that twelve and a half percent or so? Yes.
What was the overall? Participation, sorry, I pulled up the notes here, so I was looking ahead at something else on there. But what was the overall participation?
I don't remember where survey three came in. Do you remember Ethan?
You know, we were getting in the range of like four hundred, five hundred responses for these surveys, which is really good.
And then, uh, so that one was uh, kind of about the, what features did you prefer? Uh, features of the one story option, the features of the three story option. And then this question was overall, which option did you like the most? And again, this uh, had the same result. People favored the one story option. People really emphasized, just going through these notes here, uh, the walking track and the warm water therapy. Were sort of points of distinction for people that drove them to prefer the one story option. Um, the fact that it's one story and sort of the accessibility of that is another reason. Um, the spectator seating conversation that we've kind of hit on. I think that is something that could be added to the three story option, whereas the first two items are sort of a little more part and parcel to the designs. Um, and uh, also kind of building something that's looking towards the future and the future potential growth. That could occur and not just sort of meeting the needs of today. And just the variety of indoor options that are offered. There's just more of a variety, so. More chance to kind of have this start to become a, a hub of activity where people say. Oh, I know there's going to be something going on there that's for me. Um, okay, Darren, thank you for hanging in there. Um, this is, yes.
Excuse me, but before you go any further, I think we missed, uh, there was a slide in here that showed on the one story option. Um, what its square footage and cost was.
Yes, thank you. That one always. Yeah, so as opposed to the fifty seven thousand square feet, this one's seventy four thousand square feet. And it comes out to eighty seven million. And again, that's the whole enchilada. This one has a slightly uh, lower cost per square foot because it is one story. Gets a little bit more expensive to build multiple stories. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Okay, so kind of the last thing we did in comparing the two options. That have been developed is looking at their operational plans. Darren has taken care of that for us, Darren.
Everybody, thanks for inviting me to participate this evening. So we've gone through and made a pretty detailed line item budget. For each of the operations. And what this goes ahead and illustrates is that. Um, it gives you a five year projection uh, for both options. Um, it going ahead and year one is assuming the first full year of operation. So if we were able to target that. We could go ahead and escalate that up based upon what we were forecasting, but. Um, for the analysis purposes, we just went ahead and said, okay, it's year one, full, first full year of operation. So some good increases from year one to year two. Uh, by year three, four and five, you start to hit quote unquote normal for these operations. And you go ahead and carry that out so that your expenses are, your revenue ex- uh, increases are matching your expenses. Um, Ethan and his staff have done a great job. They've been really hands on going through the operational plan and giving us some detail. They actually provided some. Um, late last week, early this week, that I need to go ahead and incorporate for another round. It's not going to impact those numbers significantly. Um, because of uh, utilities, rates of compensation, those kinds of things. That seventy to eighty percent cost recovery range is probably where you would find most facilities that are geared towards. Achieving a high rate of uh, capture. Um, but a- again, it, I think that this is a conservative approach. Um, none of the programs that we're illustrating, maybe outside of um, pool rental for lap lanes. Uh, none of the other uh, areas are really at capacity, so there is additional room for revenue growth. The other thing to point out is that capital line item is cumulative. It's going ahead and it's illustrating that. The city would essentially allocate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to go towards a sinking fund. So that by year five, you had three quarters of a million dollars to go ahead and pull from to start making improvements to the building. That could be replacing equipment, that could be painting, that could be furnitures, fixtures. It could be a lot of different things, but. That way you're not, y- you have the dollars available to you. You're not necessarily having to go into the city's capital improvement plan to go ahead and make some of those. Uh, renovations or adjustments that could be helpful.
Have you had a question?
Oh, thank you. And actually, my question was, what, where does this cap- the capital line fall in? So that's our outlay to keep it. Refresh.
Correct. That hundred and fifty thousand dollars is included in that expense uh, number. So for year one and option one, that. Four hundred and nine, four, four million nine hundred and fifty four thousand, there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of capital in there. The same thing with option two, the five point zero eight four, there's a hundred and fifty thousand of capital. That's just saying for. Facility of that size, by the time you get to year five, you're going to have to start making some improvements. And if you're allocating those dollars on an annual basis, it gives you a fund to pull from. Um, too many times what we end up seeing, a- and again, I'm not accusing Covington of doing this, but. You get to the point where you have to replace five or six treadmills. And that comes out to X number of dollars. And you go in front of. City council or another uh, elected body and the choice is, okay, you can replace a police cruiser. Or you can replace five or six treadmills. W- we know which one is going to go ahead and get the dollars for that. So. Anything we can do to go ahead and help. Um. Ensure the long-term success of the facility and give you some flexibility because you are going to be operating. A quasi-business with this facility. Uh, you're talking about somewhere between ninety to a hundred hours a week of operation. Um, it's generating a significant amount of revenue. Uh, you're going to have close to, you know, three hundred to four hundred thousand visits annually. Um, w- we want to go ahead and do everything we can to, to make sure that you have uh, the resources available to be successful.
Thank you. Um, so. It sounds like, I'll just use for example, the option two, one story. So the recovery rate, now they're about comparable. Are there, other facilities in the region that have that recovery rate or even? Anywhere else in the US that you know of?
Yeah, so um, one of the things that goes ahead, it, there's. Depends on the area of the country that you're going ahead and you're doing the work in. And um, the things that are included in the overall operational plan as it relates to expenses. Um, a lot of times with the Pacific Northwest, we're going ahead and we're including some type of chargeback for the city. Uh, you're having to deal with significantly higher rates of compensation in terms of full-time staff and part-time staff. So i- it's not uncommon to be in that, you know, seventy to eighty percent. We have other facilities that are in different areas of the country that are going ahead and approaching. Close to a hundred percent cost recovery. We have others that are hanging out in that thirty to forty percent, but that has to deal with the. The demographics of the, the socioeconomics of the community that they're in and the cost recovery philosophy of the operator.
Okay, so I would assume that we would need to charge much more if we're only operating at about a fifty or sixty percent recovery now.
You can get, well, there's the other.
Or how can we do it without having to read the rate, raise the rates, I guess?
Well, I'm sorry, what was the question?
Or, or how could we not have to significantly raise rates to be able to get? What other revenue options might there be?
Um, there's a couple of things you have to take into account when you start uh, going down that path. Um, number one, we did go ahead and we did. Increase the rates because we're going ahead and we're talking about a full service facility that has gymnasium, fitness, aquatics. All those kinds of things. Um, you could go ahead and you could potentially increase those rates more. Um, but you're going to, you're, in doing that, you're going to exclude a portion of the population that would otherwise be able to participate. You can narrow um, the subsidy gap by adding programs. Um, and doing more programming in the facility. One of the challenges that you run into by doing more programs is you begin to decrease the amount of drop in availability. For members to use the facility. So there's this fine line of, you want to keep increasing your programs. To a point where they don't negatively impact your membership numbers. So. I think when we talked about membership numbers and we looked at these two different scenarios, they're probably at three to four, maybe even five percent in some cases. Uh, for the service areas that we've identified. So there's room for growth on both sides. I don't know. Um, given some of the parameters, I don't know that you can get to a hundred percent cost recovery, but do I think you can go ahead and you can potentially exceed the numbers that we projected at this point? I think you have that opportunity. I don't even know if that answered your question. I hope, hopefully that was helpful.
That was, there was some good tidbits in there. Yes, thank you.
Darren, given the revenue projections, what are the membership rates that you have applied to that?
If you give me just a second, I can pull it up. I apologize for not having that open while we were talking.
While Darren's pulling that up, I'll also mention that one of the limiting factors of our current operation is. Uh, we know the demand's there. We simply don't have the space. Um, and so, I mean, you saw the number, the space of the pools and adding gymnasiums. Um, those would fill on day one, um, in most cases. And so. Um, those are adding to the, the, the um, cost recovery rates from what we, we see right now with our current facility.
So we went ahead and we looked at um, the following categories. We looked at a youth membership, which was five twenty five annually. An adult membership, which was six twenty five. A family, which was nine fifty, a senior, which was five twenty five. And senior plus one, which was six fifty. Those were resident discount rates. Uh, for non-residents, there was a forty percent differential uh, for the membership fees that we charged. And I think when we went ahead and we looked at the total number, we came into a household penetration rate for. Residents of about seven point three percent. And non-residents, about one point five percent of the service area that we identified.
Thank you.
And that does not include parties and swim lessons.
We went ahead and we included some of those in there. We went ahead and there's some birthday parties in there. There's room rentals in there, gymnasium. Uh, pool competition rentals, pool practice rentals. Uh, we illustrated some summer camp and break camp, some. Uh, we illustrated some summer camp and break camps, some leagues, both individual and group. Uh, group exercise, uh, which would likely largely be included in a membership fee except for specialty. Uh, aquatic group exercise, swim lessons, private, semi-private, birthday parties, those types of things. We included what we would consider normal programs for a facility of this nature to go ahead and offer. But again, none of those were mapped out at capacity. All of those um have room for future growth.
Thank you, Darren.
Yep, I hope that was helpful.
Any other questions for Darren? It was. Thanks, Darren. Okay, so I think this is our last, so just about there. Um, so. We did a couple of weeks ago, present essentially this same presentation to the Parks and Rec Commission. Um, the comments there, uh, they identified high priority program items. Uh, closely mirrored what we had heard from the public, the walking track, the therapy pool, uh, the double gym. Um, and the additional on-deck spectator seating. Um, and. I don't see it here, but the um, uh, uh, making sure that there's enough staff space was a comment as well. The group unanimously voted for the one-story option. Uh, there was interest in making it a one-plus story option. Um, that, that's what I mentioned earlier, that would include additional staff space um on a mezzanine level and that sort of. Uh, just to make sure there's enough room for staff, but also for expansion of the facility if other staff were to be located there. And the design should uh accommodate future growth. Um, so that brings us to the decision. Or kind of our our next steps are to, we have done a ROM estimate, rough order of magnitude estimate on these options. Uh, those are sort of based on square footage. We would then take a preferred option that comes out of your recommendation today. And uh price that more in terms of an itemized uh costing of those. Uh, options which become much more accurate at that point. Um, question?
So, uh, with, say, for example, we went with the one story, does that preclude the parking from being multiple stories? Or is this, we're only talking about the facility. We're not talking about parking and city hall. That's a separate project. Is that true?
That is, that is correct. Um, and parking, there will be some parking needs here. There will probably be significant parking needs here. Those costs are not in the numbers that we shared yet. Um, I think that there needs to be some additional master planning level. Uh, work with whichever option is preferred in order to better understand. Where and in what capacity that parking would be able to be accommodated, whether it's structured parking or on-grade parking is not yet known.
So we've got about five minutes left.
It's, it's uh, the ball's in your court. Any other questions you guys have uh or preferences are?
Does anybody else have any questions? Do we have a preference that we'd like to have staff proceed with?
I'd say option one story.
Sean?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
I personally like option, the three-story option, but I also think we can make the three-story option into a two-story if we, instead of.
That's not the option. You get a three or a one.
I'm just saying, I'm giving, I'm giving, I'm giving another option there.
They only gave you two options.
Yeah, well, I don't like it, so I I created my own, but I want a, I want a three. I think, I like the three-story because I like the layout of the whole pavilion as a whole. Compared to the one-story option.
One story.
Beth?
I I would say one story. I think in the long run, it's going to be, you start putting elevators and things in there, you have accessibility and costs. I like the the layout. I mean, I I think there's options like the one plus, I think is, might be an option two. I mean, that's kind of. Providing flexibility there for future staffing or the mezzanine walking trail.
And I'm also good with the one story. Sean?
Um, just had a question. It made me wonder if we go with the one story. The hospital here, when it first was developed, they built um the emergency room. And then they put all of the connections on the roof so that they could build the hospital on top of it. I'm thinking, is that something? I mean, obviously, we can do whatever if we have the money for it, but that would seem smart to put. Connections on top if we wanted to expand the, for one story. So just something to think about.
Expand uh upward with more additional recreation opportunities?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, just like I'm saying, if we if we put connections on the roof to then say if we wanted to build and and go higher. Yeah, that's what the, yeah, they put everything on top and just like a Lego block, just put the hospital, right?
Yeah, but the emergency room over there didn't have supports to put building on top of the emergency.
Yeah, so we'd have to think about, yeah.
I think there's an opportunity there that we should study. Um, the the gymnasium and the nadatorium are sort of large. Free-spanning elements that are difficult to put things on top of, but there's plenty of other, you know, more modestly footprinted spaces. That we could look at either a mezzanine type build out or an additional floor on top of that.
Joe?
I I just want to add one thing, uh, another reason I chose the three-story and I I know I was alone in this, which tends to be a theme lately. Um, we're trying to find money as it is at this moment, just to run basic things. Where are we going to find an extra sixteen million dollars so we can have a walking track and two extra party rooms? It's just, it's just a thought there that we're, we're looking for. We're, we're having issues finding funding next year for just to do our basic needs. As much as I want this, I really do. I think we, it is a hundred percent a need for this community. But an extra sixteen million dollars, so we have, yeah, it's an extra twenty thousand square feet roughly. And two extra party rooms and a walking track.
And maybe, maybe I can just comment on that a little bit. Obviously, we just had an hour here tonight. Um, there is a financing component to all this of, you know, how can you put funding together for it? Um, there's a phasing strategy that could also potentially be implemented, which kind of goes along with, do you build some now and prep it for the future? So um, those are conversations we're fully aware that we'll have to tackle and and strategize on options for that and bring back to council.
Is there anything else you need from us tonight?
I don't think so. I think we'll proceed with the the one-story option and and the words that Paul outlined.
Yeah, so we will um be getting that price and then incorporate it into a summary report. Available soon.
Yeah, I think we're.
Beginning of next year.
Beginning of next year.
Thank you for being here tonight, Paul. Thanks for a great presentation and um. Thank you for being online and helping as well. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate the opportunity.
All right, and with that, this uh special meeting is adjourned. Thank you.